...... Wanted to thank the board members who were able to make the graduation ceremonies for 2012 graduates. With that being said, I wanted to bring to your attention some of the issues that we've had surrounding graduation at Lincoln County High School for a number of years, and I would like to address them to the board this evening. As you are aware, we've had graduation both in the gymnasium of the high school as well as the ball field. This year is probably the second time that we've actually held graduation at the football field. And with that comes a couple of concerns. In the building of Lincoln County High School, the one concern is that we can't accommodate all of the parents and family members of our graduates. And in all honesty, it really poses a huge issue when it comes to sometimes even just crowd control, because people do get very upset when their expectations is to see their loved one graduate. And so sometimes it even becomes a little bit of a safety issue, I'll be honest with you. I know that the fire marshals also had issues with the number of people that we put in the gymnasium. So what we had done in several years prior when we had to have it in the gymnasium, we were only able to give students like four tickets, and those students were responsible for giving those out to the people they wanted to be in attendance. And then the general public would go into the cafeteria and watch them on our TVs. And I think a number of community members were still not satisfied with that. And so we decided to move graduation to the football field last year as well as this year. And luckily, we've been very blessed with the weather that we've had, it has not rained. Couple logistical issues when it comes to having graduation outside is obviously the weather. And the principal almost has to be on a weather forecaster the week prior to graduation to ascertain as to whether or not we're going to go ahead and keep graduation out on the field or we're going to bring it indoors. And if we bring it indoors, our only option is at the high school. And again, I really don't feel that the high school is adequate for our graduation ceremonies because of just the sheer numbers. This coming year, we'll have 280 or 180 graduates, but it will probably be the smallest graduating class we've ever had. Looking at numbers of our other grade levels, we're looking at upwards of 240 graduates, you know, coming up in the next couple of years. So, you know, per year, so I think it's something that we need to take into consideration. And again, you know, I think that the ability of the school to effectively close out the school year and provide the best graduation ceremony for students is a little bit hindered by that week of, are we going to have it outside or are we going to bring it in? This year at graduation, I'm sure you all are aware that heat was a huge issue. And it was one of those things that we never really thought about. We knew that we were going to have high temperatures, so we contacted emergency services and they were, they had an ambulance on standby, but unfortunately, that one ambulance was not nearly enough for what the crowd needed. We end up, I think the grand total was there were 13 people that were, that had to be transported by ambulance to the emergency room. I know that it's the, while our graduation ceremony was only an hour and 15 minutes, the last 15 or 20 minutes that pretty much when everybody was leaving, they had 10 people all at once that were just sort of following. And luckily, we had recruited the volunteer fire department to help with parking, so the volunteer fire department were there. But they ended up having to call in EMS from Putnam and Campbell County just to meet the demand of what we were having for our ceremony. So there again, while we had good weather, there was an issue with some of our spectators. So what I have is a proposal for you all to consider so that we have a solution that will always work. It is going to be some financial obligation, and upon my research, these are my findings. Option one would be, some of these options, because we're having this, if we were to have a change in venue for next year, if that was the pleasure of the board, then some of the dates would have to be changed from what our current graduation date, which is set in the county, which is May 25th. And as of right now, we haven't gotten permission from the state to change that date, but I think that it's just going to entail a request on official form and then whether or not they'll approve it or not. But I'm going to, I really did put these in order, and I apologize, but let's look at option two first. Option two is if we cannot change our graduation date and you want us to keep it on that Saturday, which is Saturday, May 25th of next year, we could host graduation at the Charleston Civic Center Coliseum. And the cost that has been given to me by, actually as current as today, is the range of $5,200 to $6,000 for the rental of that facility. And the rental of that facility, that fee includes ticket takers, metal detectors, Charleston Civic Center required all of their spectators to go to metal detectors, security, two Charleston police officers, a union technician for sound and lights, which is required for them, and then the cost of the mic for graduation is an additional $300. Now, the reason there's such a variance in the $5,200 to $6,000 is that is dependent upon if there's a school prior to us where they would not have to set up. If there's a school that's already prior to us, which there is as of right now, which is in all county schools, then our fee will only be $5,200 in addition to the $300 for the mics. That's for Charleston Civic Center. And again, that's just for May 25th. We would have the entire day, you know, we would have the Civic Center the entire day, and that's the Coliseum. But they take care of the stage. And again, let me also say that by them providing security and the ticket takers is a huge burden that has been alleviated for us because we usually end up having to recruit staff to take care of those needs. And sometimes they miss out on some of the activities that they want to participate with the remaining staff. So that would, that would be a big, that would alleviate a lot of things. Let me reflect on option one. That would require us changing our graduation date to that Thursday because Campbell County Schools already have the Big Sandy Superstore Arena reserved for that Saturday, that Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But we are, we do get it at a reduced rate at $5,000 because they already have the, they already have it set up for, I think, Wayne County graduation. But that also includes the house sound with four mics, so that already has the microphones, all ushers, ticket takers, cleaning, custodial services, as well as security. And then finally, there's option three, which there are several dates that we could choose from. We could choose from May 18th, May 26th, or June 1st. And that's at the Charleston Municipal Auditorium, which does seat 3,400 people. And I do feel that that would adequately service what we've had in the past. We estimated we had about 2,700 to 3,000 people in attendance at this year's graduation. And it's at a much less rate at $2,600. It includes all of the above, all of the amenities that the other ones provided. But the reason it's so much cheaper is the civic centers have a lot more access that they have to have covered with their staff. And so that's why it comes at a much reduced rate. They also don't have to set up a stage because they already have the stage built in. So those are our options. So, whoa, I'm sorry. Again, all these are a full day run, a full day for everything. I do know that I believe option one, while we would be reserving May 23rd, I think we would also be able to do a practice on Wednesday. So while we wouldn't have to pay for that Wednesday, they would probably allow us to come in as long as no one else reserves it. The same, the Saturday, option two, we only get it 25th because in all hazards on the Friday. Option three, we would be able to have it, I think, the day prior to all of those. May 18th or any day, May 26th through June 1st. That's a range on option three. I did not look at the county calendar, I didn't forget when the last, when is, when is the west test window for? Whatever, whatever the west test window will probably be, on the day west test starts, the day prior will be the last day we have grades for seniors. So theoretically, we could do it on May 18th if we really needed to. That's what I was thinking. Right, so, and that sort of following along this school year's calendar, our seniors will be done on that May 12th, the 10th or 12th, or whatever falls on the Friday. With that being said, I do know that I talked with Ms. Andy, and my student activity money has been increased a little bit next year because I expressed a need for that. I wasn't counting on having to spend that on graduation stuff, but it is an option. So I'm not sure what the pleasure of the board would be to, I don't know if you can make an actual decision on finances right now, but I think it's definitely something that I would need some guidance on and your approval on. But I will tell you the time is of the essence because we don't want to lose these dates either. I'd be interested in knowing your feelings on even changing venues. I will be honest with you, I don't know. I'm not sure I've ever even been in there. You know, I think the other thing for me is that we just want, I just want to make sure we do graduation right. And, you know, it's sort of the showcase and it's the culmination for the entire school system, you know, because those students have come all the way through and, you know, it's the, in essence, it's sometimes the ending of relationship with, equipped those students. You know, you want to have them involved with all sorts of activities later on as alumnus. But I just want to make sure we do it right. And I think that under our current structure, it has the potential to fall apart at some point, and it will be beyond our control. Right. Well, I know it's been discussed for quite a while. I think when you look at, and I understand wanting to keep it in the county, you know, and I appreciate that. But I think when you look at what other school systems do, for example, Putnam County, you know, Putnam County, they all go to Charleston. So theirs is also out of county, but it's because there's nothing in Putnam County that can accommodate its size either. So I think it's, I think it's a battle that we all face. But I really, I think that if we were to look at it, Lincoln has a unique situation where we're sort of right smack dab in between Huntington and Charleston. And I think that if we were to look at having a change of venue, we might come up with a schedule where one year it's in one place and one year it's another to be, you know, so that we're fair and equitable with our residents. So I, but again, I'd even looked at the Keith Albey. I thought that would be, you know, a really neat place, but the Keith Albey parking would be an issue, and it only holds 2,400 people. So, you know, I think we would be limited there, but... I have not home students. I think if the students are, if the students were to decide they want to have it outside, I know that that's what they wanted this year, you know, the students really like to have an outside graduation. But there again, when we come down to the week of and we decide to do it outside and then all of a sudden want to bring it inside, I think that the misery that they're going to have for having to put it inside and mom and pop aren't paying, perhaps not being able to watch their, you know, and we have a lot of first generation graduates. And people want to see those students graduate when you're limiting them by four tickets. That people get upset. And I think this, these are some solutions to being able to have complete general seating, open seating for people so that everybody can enjoy seeing their loved one graduate. That has not been discussed. We, if for graduation practice purposes, you know, I would request that the school bus take the graduates out there for the practice. But I, I, my feeling is, is that they're going to travel to wherever they're 101 traveling to see that student graduate. And if they're traveling from Allen Creek or Harbs, they're still dropping, you know, all the way to Hamilton. So if they can make it to the football field or the, or the school, then, and they're going to have, you know, years notice of this date. I'm not sure that that's, that's, I know, I said something, I could pick up from the school's name. I think we could coordinate maybe something to try over transition. Because it's a big concern. The stage, more coordinated? Uh, I know, but I know that they do pretty lucrative performances, you know, so I would imagine the stage is probably a pretty good size. But the graduates wouldn't actually be on stage. The graduates would be down below, I think probably what they call the orchestra section. And then they would just, they would be in line to walk across the stage. So again, I guess this, is this something that is going to be on board agenda? Okay, and then you all, I can come back and answer any questions you might have at that point. When is that? Well, I just, I don't want to get our spots taken, so. I know that I can reserve them without a contract, but it's sort of a gentleman's contract. And I'd hate to make it, I would hate to make reservations with one venue or another and then have to retract on that, so. Okay. Thank you very much. School board? Lucas? Staff?
As spokesperson for West Hamlin Elementary, I have the honor to say to you all tonight, thank you. Our school has been recognized as a school of excellence. We're very proud of that fact. And we also understand the importance of the support that the school board and the central office staff provide to us. So we came here simply tonight to say thank you. And we ask for your continued support and encouragement as we will now reconvene when school starts and set some more goals for our school and for our county. And Youshawn, I thank you for the article. I've been told it's wonderful, I have to thank you after that part. But again, on behalf of this wonderful staff and the others who can be here, thank you very much. And we'd like to thank you and the faculty. Thank you.
We do have a wonderful letter from Dr. Markle and Mrs. Freakers saying, "Where's the lead?" Well, I have a little surprise for the staff, and the letter's being done something with this time. They keep asking me about all the surprises.
I would like to say how proud I am of everyone at the school. You all done an excellent job, and I could not ask for more dedication, hardworking staff. They set such high standards, not just for the students, but for themselves. And I am so proud, truly, and so proud to be part of this community and this community guy.
I will say something too. Some of these teachers here even had my children. And to have my grandchildren, I appreciate everyone I meet.
A lot with you.
Could we get that verified?
I'm sorry, I'm not showing my birthday.
It's the grace we hired, Nate.
I'll thank Frank.
What's the next thought?
Okay, it's moving on. Four feet, get them there. I need a motion. Or that's pretty bad. Thank you.
Okay, I am A, this is how academics do transfer for the school year 2012-13. I am B, it's a contract institute, providing assistance and provide administrative and support for the learning and school service program. According to the contract, June 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2012, it's just a US group of major education. I am C, the renewal of an on-the-job training program for the Southwestern Community Acting Council for the SCS Auto Department to provide medical repair and maintenance. From July 11th to August 10th, 2012. Nice, it's history here. The job market rate goes, you know, Southwestern, it's June, salary, it's time, it's on silkies. Children are trying to get ready for night and day. I am D, adoption of the call of revised policies that have been on Tuesday to become effective on April 31st. Internet and all of the networks policies, 7540. Student network and internet acceptable, decent safety policies, 7540.03. Staff network and internet acceptable, decent safety policies, 7540.04. This covers the site of all the rest. There are also trainings divided through students through text apps and the substitute in areas of critical need and shortage. Also, during the 2012, this is a separate initiative state as well.
Just on I am B, we just have to have an explanation for all of them.
Yes. The big service director of Campbell County will be providing the assistance since Mrs. Miller left to move to non-county. And we will be contracting from the institute for oversight as the big service director. And then, Agent Richard and Courtney will be doing the day-to-day. Most of the train, non-train, the train will be providing all the services for it.
Now, some people may be asking for a polish for the job, which is great.
Or a vote?
Yes, yes.
Motion and second on final end.
Okay, and invoices, 77,000, August 28th. Have a seven candle schedule. And, uh, monthly conference statements, and that's the also received April, March and April.
Any questions? How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh yeah. Motion and second on personnel schedule?
I'm ready. Group? A, personnel schedule, section A, employment of short or long-term staff, professional personnel, spoken 2012-2013. B, employment of professional personnel, beginning July 1st, 2012. Section C, employment of substitute service personnel for next school year. Section D, transfer of professional personnel. Section E, employment of extracurricular personnel. It's the next one, two, three, four, five, six. And section F, retirements and resignations. Tell you again, the dates, if retiring or resigning.
Question?
Yes. If you're only the informant of the, since we have a couple of teachers. We have many applicants, we did, well, we, many, we have three. We have three applicants. And just a late, had a master's, had extensive experience in agriculture, extension field. And came up with just a load of recommendations and had an excellent. And you, you, I did. And actually, she and her husband live in Huntington, and she's excited to be able to go to the research. And she, and she's been, for a while. This was Phil, yes.
Okay, anyone else have any question? Well, I am B, I watched it discussed it perfectly. I watched it, so we can get an exact conversation. I think.
Asset.
How do you vote? On executive placement first now.
Are we just going to, just part of all? Or are we going?
Well.
Not nothing, but I think we have this harmonies, so. Yes, I do have some.
The day after the executive, uh, personnel executive session, I have a motion on personnel schedule. For a vote. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah. Here's your guy, call him in.
Um, yes, um, I have, uh, something I'd like to share, I might be talking about, um, uh, concerns with bullying within their, uh, system. Uh, I just happened to, um, see this person today, she was, where? T-shirt. And she had purchased the t-shirts, uh, for the students. And they had a, um, anti-bullying contract, uh, at their school. And it's called, let's step together to stop our bullying once and for all. And the, uh, students, uh, agreed to stay the bullying when it is, uh, visible, ask everyone, you know, to watch their behavior. Wear the shirt until everyone wants to score. And they signed it. So, that was just one example of some of the things that, um, they're doing. I wanted to be able to share that, um, um, school by school, yeah. So, I don't know if it was just for the, the one that signed the contract, um. But it's not just for the best. So, that I wanted to share. Uh, also wanted to share that the modules, um, that we are wanting to make, the one at A and B all is ready to move. And I wanted to share that, um. And I think, um, you all had talked about, someone had brought up about the, uh, security cameras that was, um, they are, um, working and actually, um, they're. Uh, and security cameras and. And I know, um, you have, uh, the doctor, the student. And, um, are they have, you know, the contract has been, uh, signed. And, um, and I love the call, and, uh, like. And the walkway in high school, um, they're seeing, um, they're taking care of that. Um, public department highways and, um, the student, uh, so.
Is that the one? Is that the?
Well, we advertised more than the vehicle design. I don't know if it's, maybe it's still.
What is it?
The design of the walkway into your building, down into the walkways has an emergency exit or, you know.
The, the rant they were.
We got the department highways grant to do that, because the county has to put up some money.
I, I, I believe we never had some portion of the project.
It was the design.
It was the design, not the actual.
Not the actual inspection.
They have to figure out how to make sure that they're drawing.
Just like.
They won't take the money back. What happens along, seems like, I know, okay, but he deals with a fair similar tire. He's not in there five days a week. Department of Highway. So sometimes he can take him on.
And the air conditioning units at Fort Guy Valley are, um, ready to start, they actually had, um, had a ready, and there was an electrical panel. That was not the right one or something, they had to send it back. So. Maybe, or maybe they have received.
Yeah, they're sitting there. Looking.
It's cool, maybe, yes.
Yeah.
But, um. I think.
I think that way, which is similar works.
So we're moving along, I mean, it's, it's making progress, it's not just sitting, so it's, it's there.
That's the one, that's why.
Well, I hope that is, uh, there, but I would like, um, to request an additional, um, mortgage. Far to, uh, the nineteen. Due to the fact that we have, um, a new law that says that we cannot move, um, teachers. After twenty days prior to first instructional day. And it's not against our, uh, needs, and so we want to, uh, post and allow the people to handle it. And so, uh, so. I don't have a question. Would five, maybe, um, yeah. Oh, wait, I'm trying to come. What do I have, what do I have on my schedule on the next?
So you were saying twelve is not a.
Twelve.
Well, if we call the meeting today.
Yeah, that's it.
And then there would be, maybe, not more Tuesday.
Three days. We're already going to be, you can't count the day of meeting, so we're going to call them Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Will you pick it up on Friday?
No, I'm not.
You say I forgot already.
Bet you all get here, I just want to have a meeting without. Okay, is everybody to meet here on the quail?
I won't bring her back.
Oh.
But that's not wrong.
You have four. Two o'clock, or is it John Pop that time?
Yes.
Tom, uh, we better go. And if we have tonight, you want us to get the drinks?
It won't be a, it won't be a long trip. No, there's simply more personnel.
We will.
Run out of room, put me up for fact.
Yeah. Yeah, my dad can't personnel, yeah.
I'll make it, if you want to.
I don't know what I changed.
I think, uh. Megan Smith gave me a little something for, 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 uh, dinner, I. I, I might do it all night. And I do, right, thanks, that, probably a little.
That's whatever's bound to be.
I know you.
My daughter's having ear surgery, so I probably won't be here. If you don't want to tell you on that date. But I'm not a member of the board, please, I, I've sent my delegate.
We feel like you are.
Thank you very much.
We didn't want to catch up early.
I'll, I'll send someone.
She gonna get too soon.
Yeah.
First thing, now regarding Mr. Science, what is, what is our opinion? Do you think that's a decision, is one of those options there?
Do you prefer one?
Not, not really, uh, the only thing that I prefer is, I'd like people to have just financial assistance. Uh, if, uh, I don't know if that'll be something that, uh, you all would have to decide before, before the agenda. But I, I'd be comfortable putting forward, you know, as much as four thousand dollars, I just don't think I could. And, but if we were able to do the, any of the fives, that I'll be able to come along and, uh. That was also just, if we did number three, you wouldn't need it.
Well.
The back to board, he's getting generous.
I'm never going to give you that.
I think we would probably have to let the decision be up to him as to where, uh, especially if he's going to change it from year to year, like, how they can.
I personally, I think option one is, uh, when you look at everything that we're getting, um, I, I like option one, but it would be, it would probably be like a Thursday evening, graduation. Um, it would be after work, uh, that, you know, we're probably talking about, you know, six thirty graduation, we would still be able to get, um, some, the practice students there Thursday morning to practice. You know, um, I, I think that it's a, it's a, it's a good solution, but I also think that, um, option three, when we come down to finances, is also a good option, but you're definitely going to have some issues with the date. Option one, option two, you're going to have issues with the date.
I wonder if they study the West Test.
The night.
And then again, option two is just perfect if you look at the, the dates that we already have on file, and people are used to doing Saturdays, so.
I think with people coming out of state, and we have a lot of people coming out of state for graduations.
Then Saturday would be best.
Yeah, I think so.
That makes sense.
And in the future, you have to get a good, so you can get out of overnight.
I'm fine, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with option two, I, I do worry about what I'm, the only thing I worry about with option two is in my finances.
Well, option three, there, there's Saturday in there somewhere.
It, it, yeah, it's.
Oh, so it's eighteen to twenty sixth. Oh, just.
Oh, the eighteenth, actually, the eight, I believe the eighteenth and June first.
About Saturdays.
Are Saturdays, I believe.
Twenty sixth, Sunday, right?
Yes. Yeah, I think twenty sixth is a Monday, twenty sixth is a Monday because the twenty fourth and the twenty fifth, they had some sort of recital.
June first is a Saturday.
Yes, that is correct.
Well, you've got Saturday, May the twenty fifth, and then.
Well, Saturday, May twenty fifth is at, uh, the civic center, the, the.
I know, but the twenty sixth is on a Sunday.
I'm aware.
Oh, I thought it was Saturday, but it's on Monday, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought it was on Monday, but then twenty sixth, yes, you are correct, twenty sixth is a Sunday, so it'd be either Sunday, municipal auditorium. But now the only other issue with the twenty sixth is practice, there would be no day that we could get them down there, because it's being fully used at the auditorium. So there would be no practice for the.
It's a Saturday. Okay, I think it's Saturday. And you heard me say. What about, uh, which place, um, would be the most, um, familiar or comfortable with hair appearance, don't, with, um, the class?
Well, Huntington would be the easiest to drop in, I'll tell you that, I'll, I hope, like.
Well, you just wouldn't have any deal with downtown Charleston, well, the streets, I guess, but.
I thought it should have been all. Um, the bench would be just all. Uh, what's going on with West Test, now they have the West Test. Into the west that make up week, how's that affect?
Yeah, it's the week.
Does that affect?
I can pull it up.
I think she said West test is the end of the night.
I, I, I'm going to be estimating.
Oh, I think.
While the calendar. I'm, I'm going to assume that West Test will be the thirteenth through the seventh, seventeenth. And then makeup will be the twentieth through the twenty fourth of May. The eighteenth is on a Saturday, uh, seniors probably last day for, um, grades will be the tenth of May. So the only issue that I would foresee with the eighteenth, you know, we practice with the seniors every day of the week, uh, leading up to the, through the day of graduation. Um, so that we would be having to have faculty assisting in that practice during West Test week, so that, that would be. But, there'd only be one or two faculty members this time, because we're not having to worry about pulling faculty to set up a stage or to, you know, to set up chairs or those kind of things. Because, you know, we have, we house the chairs, and so it takes a coordinated effort to get all the sta, chairs down there, or from over here, or to get, because we would always have to set up two stages, we'd set up a stage in the, in the gymnasium, in case it would rain, and then a sta, a stage on the field. You know, so we already, we end up with two venues always set up, you know, that week. So, but even housing it somewhere else, that might not even be an issue, so the eighteenth would, would clearly work, um, it might. The only issue I'd also see with the eighteenth is that that would mean that it would put additional pressure on the counselors checking grades. Uh, you know, checking grades, making sure that transcripts are done, or completed, um, and then making sure that it doesn't, also, the other issue is that it doesn't allow any of those seniors who need to get additional work in prior to their graduation date. You're, you're really, you're cutting them down by about five or six instructional days that they could potentially purchase more. Because I, I will also say that my practice is that unless they are, you know, for example, let's say we start graduation practice on the, on the twentieth. If students are not eligible to graduate on that, on that first day of practice, then they don't get to walk. Meaning if they failed a course, and let's say they had assignments that weren't new, then we're making sure that they're aware that they're not going to receive the privilege of walking across the stage if they did not meet the requirements of graduation on what we say to seniors last day. See what I'm saying? Because what happens is, is that they traditionally, as a senior, they slack off that last six weeks, and they think that they're okay, and they get fifty percent in the class, and it fails them for the semester, so then you have some issues. And we're wanting to make sure that we're at a high level of expectation all, all year long, so we want to let them know that, you know, that's a, that's something that they're going to walk, so. So by providing that extra week, might, might make a big difference.
The atmosphere of the school is general, although in our case, it's, you know, kind of distraction, they don't seem to believe in the society.
Well, seniors aren't in the building room, well, I mean, they're, they're not, they're not told to stay home, but I mean, seniors traditionally don't even come during West Test week, so. But if we had to do practice, yes.
I'm just thinking about the other students, you know, their brother, girlfriend.
Right, that's a good point. So I think, uh. So I think basically, our options to keep it on a Saturday for families are the twenty fifth and Huntington, or, looks like, uh, well, there's the Sunday, the twenty sixth, and then June first.
Twenty fifth is not the option.
Yeah, yeah. And, oh, I'm sorry, Charleston is the twenty fifth, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty fifth and, yes, yes. So does he, both, both scenarios would, would require Charleston.
I think I agree with you there about Saturday. Or Sunday if we.
The only other concern I would have, and Brenda or Ms. Lucas, you might be able to shed some light on this, if we were doing on June first, and we're, is, is there some sort of policy on the last day that you calculate grades to the time of graduation? For some reason, I'm thinking Kenalk County had an issue, and that's why they backed up their, I think it's, I think it's because seniors don't West Test or something, and the state has said that they, their graduation date was too far away from seniors' last day.
I was like, they used to try to give the graduation date too soon.
Was that my?
I said, was it too far out?
Yeah.
It's too soon.
Okay, okay.
They were dismissing it too.
Oh, okay.
We had a space to do the calculation, we didn't go.
Okay.
Just.
So I think maybe what we would need a decision on is, is, um, the location, which would be Char, I, I think it sounds like we're going, we're Charleston, and then the date. Is, is the date of it? And then if the will of the group is to help me with some finances, then that would be great too, but I understand the situation in the county, I understand that they're, you know, things are tight, so.
I think that's probably what we're going to have to make a decision on, is how much we can assist, and then I think the principal would have to each year decide, because she did a lot of work just in this, to decide where's the best.
Mm-hmm.
It's half.
Oh, yeah, that's what I said.
And, and the response.
Or even the Sunday, twenty sixth is on Sunday.
You, you know, what, that would be the response.
And everybody's dressed up in their Sunday vests, having it, uh, you know, two thirty, three o'clock, well, you probably won't have, have time for Sunday, Sunday lunch after church, but.
Who does Memorial Day call, what?
Memorial Day would be, next year would be on the, uh, twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
So I'm sure twenty sixth would be good. I mean, well.
Unless they're, unless they're wanting to travel for Memorial Day, that's the only, that's the only.
You know, I've heard complaints both ways, the way it's wild that they have it on Memorial Day weekend, but then I've heard people say, I'm glad they have it on Memorial Day weekend, because I'm coming home anyway, so. It's everybody.
No. Okay.
I think we just need to decide.
Yep. And I'll be here commuting on kind of, kind of class, tell you.
It would probably be the first to be studied.
Oh.
There was a.
Really wasn't.
With the Sunday or the fall weekend, who can say are mine, Scotty?
Next year's? No.
Speaking of.
Um. What's the?
Propretive proposal.
Okay, so students' last day will be Friday the thirty first. Okay, so, students' last day would be Friday the thirty first of May, um, the third is an IS day, so, and then the preparation day, of course, and the Monday, so, students' last day is on Friday, and then that Saturday, which would be the first. So it would actually really cap off the end of the year if you were doing it on the first.
Do seniors stay in, in, in the lab, or?
Um. See, well, we don't.
I'm listening.
What's that, they don't participate in West Test, but, uh, we don't hold them accountable if they don't come to school, because what they would, like, they'd have West Test, there's two West Test weeks, which, um, they're not tested, and then they would only have four days when they come back.
They're really good.
They're done on the town.
Yeah, we did, yeah, uh, it's on the twenty fifth, the Sunday, the Thursday, at two o'clock, two to twenty eight, maybe four to five, at two, no, it's just one that really wants to happen, because after your physical, and, 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 so, I, I just want to be sure I have that phone. It really has four meetings, just.
And I'll have, uh, so.
You can't have any jobs on, uh, skinning.
Shut up!